Good evening, everyone. I'll call the City Council to order at 8:00 on Monday, October 18, 2021. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have 17 items on this evening's agenda, and I will ask the clerk to please read Agenda Item Number One.
Minutes, the City Council meeting on October 4, 2021.
Counselor Tenera.
Mr. President, accept and place on file, please.
Motion is made and seconded to accept and place on file. The meeting minutes, is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, opposed, approved, 11-0. Item Two.
From Counsel President Ossing, an update from Mayor Vigent regarding COVID-19.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President, members. Again, I just wanted to come down and give you a quick update of where we are citywide as far as the COVID activity goes. Currently, we have 55 active cases in the city. We've been running about 2.52 positivity rate in the last couple of weeks, so that's been fairly steady. And the active cases has been up and down from 45 to 70 now for a few weeks. So we do have five cases in the hospital right now. We had a little bump this week, but it's back down to normal, somewhere between two and four cases. There's been several times where there's been zero cases. And of the five cases we have, one is a breakthrough. The city right now is 78% of our residents have had one dose, 71% are fully vaccinated. These are a little bit different than what you see on the state website because the state website has a bad population for the city of Marlborough. If you use their current census that they put out, it's a different number. So if you use the actual number that the census put out, we're at 71 and 78%. So we're doing pretty well. And actually, in our schools, the superintendent and the administration up there has been encouraging teachers and the students. Right now, the average for the students that can be vaccinated is 67%. We're still waiting to hear from the governor whether he's going to change the 80% by November 1st, you can pull the masks off. So we're not looking to push that until we get a better indication from the governor whether he's going to stick with that or not. It was put off from October 1st to November 1st, and we're hoping that if he does that, we're going to make a big push with the students to get another vaccination clinic up there to get them vaccinated. We're still doing testing in the city up at the hospital, and we're also, we have vaccination clinics going on on a regular basis at all the pharmacies, including Bouvier's Pharmacy up on French Hill. They all take in walk-ins. So if you do want to get on and get vaccinated, all the pharmacies will take walk-ins, and more information on that can be found on our Health Department website. We are making plans right now as far as rolling out a booster plan once they've both been fully approved, and then the vaccinations of the younger students. Again, we're working with the schools, Bouvier's Pharmacy, our own health department in the hospital to make sure we're all set up and ready to go. We, I do want to change direction a little bit. Tomorrow, we do have a flu shot going in the city down at the Senior Center. We originally asked everyone to sign up and register. At this point, we still have some openings, so from 10:00 to 12:00 tomorrow, any city residents that are 18 or over can get on and just walk in and get a flu shot. So that's good news. And the only other thing I don't want to mention is the Horribles Parade is next Thursday, the 28th, from 4:30 to 5:30. I've messed that up a couple of times and said 6:00, but it's actually 4:30 to 5:30. That band better start at 5:30 so I don't run out of candy. So, any questions?
Questions for the mayor. Counsel Oram.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lately, we're hearing news now, and I know in Ashland, they're regionalizing for drive-through testing for COVID. Has there been any discussion amongst your department or the Board of Health for a consideration of a regional area up here for drive-through to be tested for COVID?
Obviously, we did that for, well, probably over a year. And we had hit almost 2,000 tests a day between doctors' express and the hospital. The hospital was doing 1600 to 1800 tests a day, but we haven't, we haven't talked about regionalizing it again and getting it going. We're going to watch and see how this, this bump goes, but it's been really, really consistent in the city of Marlborough as far as our numbers go. If you look back a couple of months, we're in the same ballpark, so.
Okay, and then on the same area of COVID, and I'll note flu in a second, related to the schools, thank you for the update, 67% we're getting there. If we ever do know where the governor's going after November 1st, it'll be interesting to see how the school committee handles it. You're part of the school committee, but I would ask that, you know, consideration be taken from parents as well as the committee itself. And if we do get to 80%, and it's still required, allowed, rather, to do without mask, where's the science behind it? I would just want to make sure that it's well-vetted between the school committee and our parents, so important factor in my view. I know in Ashland's been in the news, they hit 80% with the town of Hopkinton. I don't work in Ashland any longer, I'm semi-retired, but it was good to see them hit 80%, but they're debating if they're even going to go forward with the no-mask opportunity. And outside of that, as we all know today, one of our greatest leaders passed due to COVID, and may he rest in peace. But I wanted to note, too, it was great to go to the transfer station today and see the flu shots available on yours, the electronic board. So keep up that good work on messaging so people know they can get the flu shot. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
John Gossaid in the Health Department done a great job, so.
Thank you, Counsel Oram. Any other questions for the mayor? Counsel Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Through you to the mayor. You talked about the positivity rate being 2.5% for testing, but how many testing, how many tests are we doing now a week?
They had gotten up to a couple hundred a day, I believe. So it's not anywhere near where we were going, but, you know, it's, that actually has been ticking up because you're still need it in different places, and so, and it's still free, so we still offer it.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Dusset. Counselor Perlman.
Thank you, Mr. President, and through you to the mayor. Just to repeat, could you say how long the testing is going forward? Is there a date that that's going to stop from the stop the spread?
Right now, we're booking through the end of December. It hasn't been extended past that, but I believe right now it's December 31st that the hospital is lined up through.
Okay, and right now, can people do walk-up as well, or they have to still book an appointment?
No, I believe they can walk up from 8:00 to 12:00.
You can actually drive up.
Yes.
Drive up, I'm sorry.
Drive up, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Perlman.
And just a clarification, if, in fact, it does start becoming an issue on the streets and driving up because a couple days there was some backup onto the street, we've already talked to the hospital about finding alternative locations. So the plan's in place. If it starts getting real busy, we're just going to shift it.
Anyone else? All set. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you all very much. Have a great meeting.
Moving on, Agenda Item Number Three.
Certification from Ward Six Counsel Sean Navin as required in the Mass General Law, Chapter 39, Section 23D regarding the application for special permit of Abashon Realty, Inc. for two drive-through facilities associated with the new Starbucks and a bank at Wayside Crossing Plaza, 661 Boston Post Road East. Order Number 21-1008395.
Counselor Navin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to accept and place on file this document certifying that I have taken the steps necessary to participate in this matter.
Motion is made and seconded to accept and place on file. Is there any discussion on the communication? Seeing none, all those in favor, it is approved 11-0. Agenda Item Four.
Communication from the mayor regarding a gift acceptance in the amount of $1,000 from the Aitken family for reimbursement of costs associated to the flag, to the flag box in City Hall and for programming for local veterans. And a clarification was sent from the mayor's office that it should be from the, in honor of Raymond Ray Lockettor Jr.
Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to Ray Lockettor Jr. for his most generous gift and motion to approve the gift, please.
Motion is made and seconded to approve the gift. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, it is approved 11-0. Agenda Item Number Five.
Communication from the mayor regarding grant acceptance in the amount of $56,250 from the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs awarded to the Engineering Department to be used for a consultant to review and update the city's regulations in supporting climate resiliency.
Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to thank Priscilla Ryder and Tom DePersio for the collaborative effort in getting this grant going forward. Motion to approve the grant.
Motion is made and seconded to approve the grant. Is there any discussion on the motion? Counsel Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I think this is excellent news. We hope to cover this within the Climate Resiliency Committee because I think this is definitely moving towards that. And again, great thanks to Tom DePersio and Priscilla Ryder for putting this in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Dusset. Any other questions on the motion, on the motion to approve? All those in favor, opposed, it is approved 11-0. Agenda Item Number Six.
Communication from the mayor regarding grant acceptance in the amount of $34,995 from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security awarded to the Police Department to be used on various traffic enforcement measures and the purchase of equipment.
Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to thank Chief Georgie and the Marlborough Police Department. Motion to approve the grant.
Motion is made and seconded to approve the grant. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, it is approved 11-0. Agenda Item Number Seven.
Communication from the mayor regarding certification of free cash in the amount of $15,2700, in addition to transfer requests from Undesignated Fund to OPEB Trust and Undesignated Stabilization in the amount of $1,500, $1,50270 each pursuant to the fiscal policies of the city.
Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is certainly a teamwork effort, and just to put it in perspective, most communities strive to get 3% to 5% of the annual budget for free cash going forward, so this definitely demonstrates a strength for the financial side of the city. This evening, I'd like to make a motion to approve the transfer of $1,50270 to the OPEB Trust and a transfer in the amount of $1,50270 to stabilization, and also a motion to, a motion to accept and place on file the communication from the mayor. Thank you, Mr. President.
Motion is made and seconded to approve the two transfers and accept and place on file the communication. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, the two transfers are approved 11-0. Agenda Item Number Eight.
Communication from the mayor regarding a transfer request in the amount of $146,288 which moves funds from PEG funds to IT equipment to fund the purchase of an electronic time system and equipment.
Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to refer to the Finance Committee, please.
Motion made and seconded to refer to the Finance Committee. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, it is approved to go to Finance 11-0. Agenda Item Number Nine.
Communication from the mayor regarding the reappointment of Mark Gibbs as Director of Data Processing and Priscilla Ryder as Conservation Officer for three-year terms respectively from the date of council confirmation.
Counsel Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to refer to personnel.
Motion made and seconded to refer to the Personnel Committees. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, it is approved 11-0 to go to Personnel. Agenda Item Number Ten.
Communication from Solicitor Jason Grossfield regarding the proposed zoning amendments, Chapter 650, Section 5 and 18, Subsection 36, by adding hobby vehicle storage as a warehousing use in the limited industrial district in proper legal form. Order Number 21-1008344.
Counsel Aroby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move, to move this to Item Number 16.
Motion made and seconded to move this item to Agenda Item Number 16. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, it is moved to Agenda Item 16 11-0. Agenda Item Number, I'll let you catch up, 11.
Communication from City Clerk Stephen Carrigan regarding the municipal election call.
Could I have you read the correspondence, please?
City Clerk B. is hereby authorized and directed to warn and notify the voters of the city of Marlborough duly qualified to vote in the municipal election to assemble in their respective polling places as designated by the City Council as follows. Ward 1, Precinct 1 and 2, the Francis J. Cain School, 520 Farm Road. Ward 2, Precinct 1 and 2, the Francis J. Cain School, 520 Farm Road. Ward 3, Precinct 1, the Senior Center at 40 New Street. Ward 3, Precinct 2, the Raymond J. Richer School, 80 Foley Road. Ward 4, Precinct 1 and 2, the Senior Center at 40 New Street. Ward 5, Precinct 1 and 2, at Masonic Lodge, 8 Newton Street. Ward 6, Precinct 1 and 2, at the First Lieutenant Charles W. Whitcomb School, 25 Union Street. Ward 7, Precinct 1 and 2, at the Hildreth School, 85 Sawen Street, on Tuesday, November 2nd, 2021, then and there for the purpose of casting their votes for the candidates for the following offices: mayor, councilors-at-large, ward councilors, wards 1 through 7, school committee members. It is further ordered that the polling place legally designated by the City Council be opened at 7:00 in the forenoon and be closed at 8:00 in the evening. The City Clerk B. is hereby authorized to cause notice to be given by publication of this order in a local newspaper and by posting a copy of the same in a conspicuous place in the office of the City Clerk.
Counsel Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to accept and place on file.
Motion is made and seconded to accept and place on file the election notice. Any discussion? Counsel Oram. And I ask that we not make this political, please. Counsel Perlman.
Thank you. I was just going to ask if the city clerk could also reiterate the early voting hours?
Absolutely. I didn't bring it with me, but they will begin this Saturday, October 23rd, 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Sunday, October 24th, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And then the normal business hours of City Hall, which is Monday, 8:30 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Tuesday, 8:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Wednesday, we will be open 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And Thursday and Friday, again, 8:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Here in City Hall, Committee Room, first floor.
Any more? Counsel Oram.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a question, I know I ask this every year. Are the schools open during the day of the election?
Thankfully, Superintendent Bergeron has, they have scheduled a professional development day, so schools will not be, the students will not be in place. There may be faculty in some of the facilities throughout, throughout the city, but no students will be in place, so we'll, we'll have no need for police details or anything.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Oram. Anyone else? On the motion to accept and place on file the election call, all those in favor, opposed, it is approved 11-0. Agenda Item Number 12.
Communication from City Clerk Stephen Carrigan regarding information on the proposed updates to ward and precinct lines to comply with the 2020 reprecincting for the city of Marlborough. Order Number 21-1008403.
Counsel Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to move to Number 17.
Motion made and seconded to move this item to Agenda Item Number 17. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, it is approved to move to Agenda Item 17 11-0. Agenda Item 13.
Communication from the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, Department of Environmental Protection regarding a public hearing notice.
Counsel Tenera, or Counsel Oram. Counsel Tenera.
Thank you, Mr. President. Accept and place on file.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file the communication. Any discussion on the motion? Counsel Oram.
Very quickly, we're seeing more and more storms, 100-year storms, 500-year storms, and with that, we see overflowing sewage. That's what this is all about. Common sewers, people pumping non-sewage waste into the sewer systems causes overflows, can even come out of the manholes if it gets so bad. We don't have many rivers, but we do have water bodies nearby, including Fort Meadows, so this is what this is all about. And it's unfortunate, but we are seeing with climate change more chances of this type of bad weather with rain. So it's a good situation, and they do need to resolve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Oram. Any other discussion? Seeing none, on the motion to file the communication, all those in favor, opposed, it is filed 11-0. Agenda Item 14.
Minutes of boards, commissions, and committees.
Mr. President.
Counsel Dusset. Thank you very much, Mr. President. Motion to accept and place on file the minutes of the boards, commissions, and committees.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file all the minutes. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, the minutes are approved or filed 11-0. Agenda Item 15.
Claims.
Mr. President.
Dusset.
Thank you very much. Motion to send claims to legal.
Motion made and seconded to send the claims to the legal department. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, these claims are sent to the legal department 11-0. Reports of committees. Who wants to go first? Counsel, I'll, Counsel Aroby.
We'll do ladies first this evening.
There you go.
So the City Council Urban Affairs Committee met on Wednesday, October 13th. We had two items on our agenda. Order Number 21-108354, an application for a special permit from Attorney Christopher Flood on behalf of Post Road Mobile Home Park and Sales Incorporated to create a second mobile home park by dividing an existing permitted mobile home park located at 181 Boston Post Road East. We went over the department head's comments. The only one who really had anything was the Board of Health, who reminded the applicant that they need to file for permits. The applicant had indicated that they had actually filed and were waiting for the special permit before they continue. Counsel Dusset moved to recommend approval of the draft decision for the special permit application. The motion was seconded, and the motion carried 5 to 0. The second order was Number 21-108395, an application for a special permit from Attorney Falk on behalf of Abashon Realty Company Incorporated for two drive-through facilities associated with the new Starbucks and a bank at Wayside Crossing Plaza, 661 Boston Post Road East. At our meeting, Counsel Navin had stated he was absent from the public hearing, and so he was able to be part of the discussion. Again, we read through the department head's comments, with the only one of significance from City Engineer DePersio, who added additional language for condition number eight, the traffic flow, which would read the applicant, "Its accessories under a sign shall also install and maintain signage at the east end of the site such that it is visible from the Descenso Boulevard-Boston Post Road intersection that directs drivers headed west on Boston Post Road to use Descenso Boulevard to get to Starbucks to try to reduce the illegal left turns into the target driveway." The petitioner was without objection, and Counsel Dusset moved to recommend approval of the draft decision as amended. The motion seconded, and the motion carried 5 to 0. I'm asking for a suspension on both of these to be referred to the solicitor to be put in proper form.
Okay, the chair has asked for suspension for both items, so, and the suspension for both items. All those in favor, opposed, both items are suspended, and the suspension is. Counsel Aroby.
Move to refer both of these, Order Number 21-108354 and Number 21-108395, to the solicitor to be put in proper form.
Motion is made and seconded to refer both these items to the solicitor to put in proper format for our November 8 meeting. Everybody clear? So it's both items. All those, any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, they are approved. Counsel Landers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Service Committee meeting met on October 13th. We had two items on our agenda. The first item was Order Number 21-108374, petition from National Grid and Verizon in New England to install a new jointly-owned pole, pole 15-15 at 181 Cedar Hill Street. I did read all the comments that City Engineer gave us, and on a motion by Counsel Perlman to suspend the rules at the October 18th meeting, regular meeting, to recommend approval of the petition from National Grid and Verizon to install a new jointly-owned pole, 15-15 at 181 Cedar Hill Road, subject to the conditions submitted by the City Engineer, seconded by Counsel Irish, it was approved 3-0. The second item, Order Number 21-108392, petition from Crown Castle, N-G-E-L-L, to install underground conduit on Crowley Drive in Pittsburgh Street. Again, on a motion by Counsel Irish to suspend the rules at tonight's meeting, regular meeting, to recommend approval of the petition of the Crown Cap Castle, N-G-E-L-L-C, to install underground conduit on Crowley Drive in Pittsburgh Street, subject, condition, subject by the, submitted by the City Engineer, seconded by Counsel Perlman. So what I'd like, Mr. President, tonight, that we do, really, two votes here, on each one, that we vote to suspend the rules, that we may vote tonight, and then actually have the vote.
There's been a motion to suspend the rules to, to vote on both items. So we're clear, so both the Cedar Hill and the Crowley Drive. So motion to suspend the rules. All those in favor, opposed, rules are suspended. Counsel Landers.
Okay, that being the case, what I would like is a vote now on Order Number 21-108374. That's a petition from National Grid and Verizon to install a new jointly-owned pole, 15-15 at 181 Cedar Hill Road.
Motion made and seconded to approve the order to allow National Grid to do the work at pole 181 on Cedar Hill Road with the conditions of the City Engineer. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, opposed, it is approved 11-0.
Okay, and thank you, Mr. President. The second vote would be on Order Number 21-108392, petition from Crown Castle to install underground conduit on Crowley Drive in Pittsburgh Street.
Motion is made and seconded to approve the installation of conduit on Crowley Drive with the conditions of the City Engineer. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, it is approved. Any other reports of committees? Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Service Announcement, Finance Committee will be meeting on October 25th, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none. Agenda Item 16.
Order Number 21-1008344C, proposed zoning amendment to Chapter 650, Section 5 and Section 1836, by adding hobby vehicle storage as a warehousing use in the limited industrial district. Recommendation of the Urban Affairs Committee is to approve as amended.
Counsel Aroby.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I would move to accept and place on file the communication from the solicitor. And second, in the communication from the solicitor, he indicated that he thought this needed a further amendment to make it clear that this was only storage and no manufacturing. So based on his comments, I'm going to move to amend proposed Section 655 definition for hobby vehicle storage by adding the following sentence at the end of the paragraph, "No manufacturing is allowed."
So on the first one, there's been a motion made and seconded to accept and place on file the solicitor's communication. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, communication is filed 11-0. On the second one, a motion is made and seconded to add the words "no manufacturing" to the ordinance submitted by the solicitor and approved by the Urban Affairs Committee. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, this is an ordinance change, so it will go through the four stages. All those in favor of suspending the first reading and approving the second reading? All in favor? Opposed, that portion is approved 11-0. All those in favor of passage to be enrolled? All those in favor, opposed, that is approved 11-0. All those in favor of the passage to be ordained? All those in favor, opposed, that is approved. Is there any objection to passage in one evening? Okay, it is approved. Well done. Let's see, number 17.
Order Number 21-108403, communication from City, from the city clerk regarding proposed reprecincting map and census block data. The recommendation of the Reprecincting Committee is to approve.
Counsel Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to accept and place in file the communication from city clerks, as well as motion to approve Order Number 21-18403.
And a motion made and seconded to accept and place on file the communication from the clerk and the order to approve the map 2, the block diagram, and the legal description. Any discussion on the motion? Counsel Perlman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is it possible to have the city clerk read the letter?
Sure.
Yeah.
Dear President Ossing and counselors, as required after the federal census, we have completed the required work to redraw the voting districts. The next step in the process is for the City Council to take a formal vote to approve the districts. Once this step is completed, we can submit for final approval by the LEDRC, which is the Local Elections District Review Commission, as was discussed with the Reprecincting Committee. The wards and precincts all meet the legal requirements. Accordingly, I have attached the following for the City Council approval. Proposed order for City Council consideration, ward and precinct map final draft, ward and precinct legal descriptions final draft, ward and precinct block data final draft. Once the Council Once the council endorses our new ward and precincts, precinct lines, we will transmit this information to the LEDRC, so our final review can be scheduled to have our wards and precincts approved. After the, after this final step, this office will undertake the task of notifying voters and residents who are impacted by the changes that we make. I would like to take this opportunity to thank Assistant City Clerk Wilson Chu, GIS Administrator Nathaniel Bowen, City Engineer Thomas DePersio, and City Solicitor Jason Grossfield for their help and assistance through this process. If you have any questions or concerns, please feel free to let me know. Sincerely, Stephen Carrigan, City Clerk.
Counsel Perlman.
Thank you so much, and I just wanted to remind people, this does not take effect until twenty-twenty-two. Am I correct?
Correct. This, these districts lines will not change until after this upcoming election, so my office will not undertake the task of notifying them until at least sixteen days from now, which is after the election.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was clear, given all the information of today's agenda. Thank you.
We will send no notifications until probably at least the beginning of December, and then there will be multiple that will, they will receive.
Good point, Counsel Perlman. Anyone else? Hearing none, all those in favor approving the order? Opposed, it is approved, eleven-zero. Counsel Tenera.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn, all those in favor, opposed. We are adjourned at eight-thirty-one.